Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 7, 2019. I'd like to take a moment to ask the government to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call Mayor Protem, Kevin Ice.
We often think that life is found at ordinary pace through the long winter months, but as spring comes bounding in, the world seems to demand so much more of us. We are called outside by the beauty of the days and we're called to be witnesses to the many ways our citizens and our families have been engaged in life these last many months and over the last year. Dedications, ribbon cuttings, celebrations of the work we have done, graduations and award ceremonies for the first responders, picnics for our employees where we recognize the years of service, remind us that people go on achieving and pursuing their goals and our city's larger goals, often out of our sight. We have the great fortune and privilege to often be invited to these celebrations because of the office we hold, yet we are personally moved by the things that are being done. Our citizens and our employees weave the fabric of our common life in Burlington. They inspire us every year and we praise their dedication and willingness to serve. We ask your blessing on them. Give this council the wisdom to make good decisions, especially as we consider budgets and projects. Help us to live up to the example set by all those honored this year who grace us by their presence in our city and in our lives. We ask for guidance tonight and in all of our deliberations.
A whole set of recognitions to see. We're going to start with Building Safety Month and I'm going to call forward inspections Director Jane Adams. Jane, if you'd like to tell us a little about building inspection.
Absolutely, glad to hear it. Counsel, mayor, thank you for your time today. I've had the pleasure of serving as a final official now serving as inspections director. I'll be remiss if I didn't bring up the fire department while talking about inspections. But I've learned a great deal. I've been able to participate and work on the site from all fantastic inspectors. And the Building Safety Month proclamation switched to five, three meetings or one thing in five weeks for the month of May. And fortunately, this week is all about professional development and continuing education. One of my part-time inspectors, Bill Davis, is attending a class tomorrow, so he's keeping up with his kind of head. But my hopes in doing this proclamation is more or less getting the word out about building inspections, what we do. I know last year they completed over 12,000, approximately 12,500 inspections and over 4,000 permits and we're on track this year to pass that. And within the past four years, I know our inspections have increased 24 percent. The last time we've seen numbers like this was in 2008 and some of you probably are aware of the development that was taking place then. But the numbers we're seeing today is unprecedented, so I'm very proud to be a part of this and I appreciate it. Mr. Nolan, Assistant City Manager, for stepping up and giving me the opportunity to do this. Counsel, oh, now, I'd like you all.
If you'd join me. My honor, on behalf of City Council, to present this proclamation and recognition of Building Safety Month for May 2019. Whereas the city of Burlington is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on safety and economic value of homes, buildings and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safety, safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas "No Code, No Confidence," the theme for Building Safety Month 2019, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure safety of our built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safe codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Burlington City Council does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Building Safety Month in the City of Burlington. Thank you. This time I'd like to call Police Chief, Judge Mike. Chief, if you want to tell us a little about Police Week.
Yeah, well, so most of the information of the proclamation, what I think I'll add is we're celebrating that the numbers that are included in the proclamation just aren't accurate. So three more police officers were killed this weekend in America, following on eight police officers in the last year in North Carolina. And I tie that, you mentioned budgets, and I tie that to my praise for you all that we have a remarkable level of training here in Burlington. It keeps our officers safe and it keeps our public safe. And we couldn't do that without the support of council. So beyond just a proclamation, I think you speak to the importance of public safety and law enforcement in general with almost everything you do here in the city of Burlington. So thank you for that.
On behalf of the City Council, we're going to buy.
Yeah, come on up, guys.
It's our honor to recognize National Police Week, May 12 through 18, 2019, whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 139 dedicated members of the Burlington Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 158 officers who died in 2018 and 35, now 38, that have been killed thus far in 2019. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored in Washington, D.C. during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2019. And whereas we also honor the memory of our only Burlington police officer killed in the line of duty, Officer Sonny W. Vaughn, Hand of Watch, December 7, 1938. And whereas May 15, 2019, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the U.S. flag should be flown at half staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Burlington City Council formally designates May 12 through 18, 2019, as Police Week in the City of Burlington and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you. This time I'll call forward our Public Works Director, Alka Blen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It gives me great pleasure, on behalf of Public Works Department and in conjunction with the Departments of Transportation, City Engineering, and Water Resources. 1960, President, then-President Eisenhower started what was later to be known and given a presidential proclamation in 1962 by President Kennedy, the National Public Works Recognition. So since 1962, the third week of May for every, of every year has been designated as National Public Works Week, from the East Coast, West Coast, and including Canada. Over 30,000 agencies celebrate this. And so it gives me a great pleasure again, as I said, to represent Burlington and with Departments of Transportation, Water Resources, City Engineering, Public Works, recognize just the significance that Public Works has in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the City Council, it's my honor to recognize National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2019, whereas the public work service provided in our community are integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Burlington City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of Burlington and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality life of our community. Thank you. This time we recognize, sorry.
Members of the council, it is my responsibility to remind you very deeply to avoid conflicts like this. I ask that there are any conflicts and to minimize potential divisions.
Before council, our minutes from the April 1 work session, April 2 City Council meeting, and April 16 City Council meeting. Right here, a motion to approve that next. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes have been approved. Next is our agenda. City Member Harden Watkins has additional requests to be added.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think we've had some discussion this week for thinking about our schedule for the May 21, 2019 City Council meeting. There are three City Council members who will be present, two that will be absent. And in learning about that, we've had some discussion and one of the matters that's scheduled that evening is the St. Mark's Church resuming item that was scheduled that evening. We have received word today from those folks that they were going to postpone it until June 4th and would prefer to appear on that date. And we're familiar with the architect on that. So the question would be, would council be interested in canceling the May 21 meeting? Or would you like to move forward with the May 21 meeting? If you were interested in canceling the meeting, we would need to add two items to tonight's agenda. And Mr. Mayor, it is a pleasure, but I'm going to go ahead and mention those two.
Yep.
So one, one will be three items. One would be to formally counsel, formally take action to cancel the meeting tonight. So item, this would be additions to the consent agenda. The first addition would be to cancel the May 21, 2019 City Council meeting. The second addition would be to set the date of public hearing for June 4, 2019, to consider adopting the proposed FY 2019-2020 city budget and community development budget. And item number three for the consent agenda would be to approve the Link Transit Fair Free Service Days during the week of June 3 through June 7, 2019, in recognition of the Link Transit System's 3-year anniversary. Just to be clear on item number two, that is just to set the date of public hearing, and then obviously you would take action that later that evening. So we normally would have been setting that public hearing at the May 21 meeting, before June 4. You're just setting that now. Obviously, that would be full deliberation and communication on June 4.
Any questions regarding the request for add-on?
No, I think it's a project that could use a direct immersion.
How, who goes add-on?
I would make a motion to that event.
Okay. Second. All right. All those in favor of the motion to accept the add-on agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Next, before council is our agenda, including the add-on items to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-ons?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-ons and save.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. Anyone have any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of a 1999 John Deere 1200A Field Rake as surplus property to Norbe's Guilford Middle School pursuant to NCGS 160A-28. Item B, to approve budget amendment 2019-38 to allow Recreation Parks Department to use funds donated by Impact Elements for signage of park facilities. Item C, to approve budget amendment 2019-39 to allow Burlington Police Department to use RICO funds to purchase general public safety equipment. Item D, to cancel the May 21, 2019 City Council meeting. Item E, to set a date of public hearing for June 4, 2019, to consider adopting the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget and community development budget. Item F, Link Transit Fair Free Service Days during the week of June 3 through June 7, 2019, in recognition of the Link Transit System's 3-year anniversary. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, wait a minute. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda items have been approved. This moves us to new business. Item one of new business, City Council will consider a request to temporarily close Davis Street from Main Street to Spring Street from 2:00 p.m. until 10:30 p.m. on July 19, 2019, during the Room at the Table special event hosted by Healthy Elements in Downtown Brooklyn. Council will also consider a request to allow beer and wine to be served in a designated area contingent upon meeting hall insurance and special events permit application requirements. This time we recognize and let's keep the men organized.
Good evening, Margie.
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to make this request. Room at the table is a catalyst event that's going to serve as an annual fundraiser for the authentically elements farmers market network, and it'll be taken on by Healthy Elements in the future. Its purpose is twofold, in addition to creating funds, a funding stream for the markets, is to showcase local foods and to challenge our local restaurants to participate, to create 100% authentic elements menus and courses. We also want to bring awareness to the strengths and weaknesses of our food system. So we're requesting that we close down the block right in front of Impact Elements and we'd like to serve alcohol there in the street. And we're hoping that you will accept that request and approve it and have me answer any questions that you have about the event.
Thank you. Any questions from council regarding the event? Do I hear a motion regarding the side?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is approved.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Item two, City Council will consider approving amendments to the transportation sidewalks and intersection improvements, capital project ordinance BA 2019-34. This time we recognize City Member Harden Watkins.
Please, Mr. Mayor, and Mike, um, Director of Transportation, is going to also participate in this decision. I'll get started and it might, will help us with getting our slides up and then also help with questions, if council has questions. So let me provide a little background information on this item, and then we'll get a little bit more clearer. So the city, you know, obviously we have a dedicated focus on pedestrian facilities we determine as very important, whether the funding, the adoption of the Pedestrian Management Plan 2013. Council also adopted the Greenway and BikeWay Plan 2017. So in order to get some of those projects moving and implement components of those plans, we're bringing, staff is bringing forward three projects along the Church Street corridor that we feel would be ready for mobility and walkability. Two of the projects are supplying, we need to take on two of these to supply the city's required match to plan the NC DOT projects. The city's leveraging DOT's commitment to spending to obtain some much-needed facilities that otherwise would not be included in our road and parking projects. So they typically will put in some pedestrian facilities, but once they will not, either they don't do it or we have to supply the funds to do that. So we can elaborate on that if you're interested. One of those is South Church Street, Mike, if you'll point it out. South Church Street from University Drive to Westbrook. That provides some maintaining connectivity for folks in the Twin Lakes area and the Elon University communities and helps build, begin to build a network there. The other one is both sides of South Church Street, Hufman Mill Road. That's an extremely busy intersection, as everyone knows. That'll provide some safer options for folks in this busy commercial shopping area. And then we have an additional non-DOT project that has been selected by city staff from the city's party sidewalk list that was in 2013 pedestrian plan for funding and implementation. This project would install sidewalks on the north side of North Church Street from Fisher Avenue to Beaumont Avenue, and that provides some much improved access and walkability for neighborhood residents along this busy thoroughfare. So Mike, just want to highlight all three of those again. So North Church.
Yeah, if you want to start, when you say at North Church, if you'd like, that is a project from the pedestrian plan, that's the next, one of the next priority projects for that project. We're working our way through the network at Grand Huckle Dell Road, this will be approved with the DOT project there. Working back to the next, Hufman Mill Road, major project there, intersection project that we look like getting multi-use path and sidewalk on all four legs of that intersection. Also to note, the city is going to be constructing sidewalk from roughly, I think it's Nice Court to Columbia. There's a little section, notice NC DOT was outside their project scope. We felt like a sidewalk to create the network need to be continued on up the street. That was also in our pedestrian plan as well. South Church Street on University Drive to Westbrook, that's there at the corner property. That's been a question for a long time, so we provide sidewalk and multi-use path along that. But there, there is a multi-use path along University Drive existing, so we'll be able to connect with that as well. That goes all the way to Westbrook as through by the shopping center. All these will include crosswalk crossings as well, or pedestrian crossings.
So let me talk a little about funding and see if there are any questions. So there's available funding in the city's assigned fund balance account for pedestrian facilities, so I'm recommending that City Council authorize usage of these funds and allocate them to the projects as we described them. With due to significant public interest and demand for improved pedestrian facilities across the city, these three projects will provide some connectivity improvements in very highly visible, highly utilized areas in the city. So we feel like it's going to keep them in the spirit of what direction council has been authorized. Thank you, Rich. Finance directors recommend we handle this through amendment of the city's capital project ordinance dealing with transportation sidewalks and intersection improvements. That was initially established in 2017, it's going to be an amendment for that ordinance. All that was included in the packet. The three projects, you want to cite the prices of each of them? I'll read each of them. The Church Street section from University Drive to Westbrook is estimated at 313,000. The South Church Street to Hufman Mill portion is estimated at 132,000. And the sidewalk on the north side of Church Street from Fisher to Beaumont is estimated to be 230,000. So council was so inclined, this would be authorizing use of the signed fund balance, and the council action would be to approve, approve a budget amendment request.
So just for clarity, this is not in our budget for this year? This truly cannot fund balance?
Correct.
Any questions regarding the second?
Mike, what happens from Westbrook to Williams? Is that part of the project that's happening?
From St. Mark's, correct. You'll have a connection to the actual sidewalk ends beyond the driveway at Throughline, so this next project will take the sidewalk to the other side of the driveway coming from University. Yes. So you'll be, you'll have pedestrian improvements basically from University all the way to St. Mark's.
Hufman Mill project, so it's all four?
All four legs will have, one side, the west side, the Harris Teager side, mall side will have a sidewalk. The Lowe's hardware side will have a multi-use path. And we're going to extend a section of sidewalk of that up to Columbia, is it Columbia? Columbia, Columbia, yeah, Columbia Drive. So it's just one more block that completes that.
Mike, are there plans, are there any plans along the extension of Church Street then further down, coming back towards the park?
Two projects, one that is recently funded by DOT would be the Torrington to Fifth Street, that'll have pedestrian improvements in. It's not been actually designed yet, but that'll be a request to the city, and you'll see a similar local share or local match requested for that, which will be 40 percent. That would give you pedestrian from Torrington to Fifth Street, which would be on the park.
Okay, so in other words, it's a standstill and then you get to Columbia Drive, the sidewalk stops.
Correct.
Coming back this way.
Correct.
Other questions? Do I hear a motion regarding the second?
I move that we approve the amendments to the transportation sidewalks and intersection improvements, capital project ordinance BA 2019-34.
Do I hear a second?
No.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is approved. All right. Like you get to stick around, item three, City Council will consider approving amendments to the transportation sidewalks and intersection improvements of the capital project ordinance being 2019-35 for signal, traffic signal system upgrade.
This was an agreement, this is a follow-up from agreement, also included after the fact. This represents our local match. It's almost a pepper's of a $15 million project. Our match is just over $1 million, replacing our entire system, signals, fire, equipment, traffic control room, things of that nature, so it's a complete update. It's beyond 20 years old of what we have now, so it's going to be a tremendous improvement. So again, it's a required part, it should be DOT to do that.
Any questions regarding the second?
I have one. What has been our experience with cost overruns on NC DOT projects?
It's a possibility, and I think I know that that's in the agreement, that if they do go over, that we'll do the cost share the same way. We will unfortunately know that as with most projects towards the end, probably about at least 12 months out of that, but.
How has it been?
Most of the highway, I mean, the local share projects we go on with sidewalks have not had overrun for the most part. We're very involved with this project, we'll know if there's going to be a major overrun cost, but I don't anticipate a large or a high possibility of that happening on this one. It's a, it is a contract with a set price, so it would be something they find they maybe didn't know when they put the contract together.
So are there any ancillary costs that we'll have at the city level other than the project costs itself?
We have the same staffing, same support, same maintenance services that we do. It'll just be a tremendously improved system. For example, right now, we don't get the best feedback from our signals. We don't really know sometimes when they are on the flash or when they're out. But if we go out there and send someone to field, it's 2019, we're going to have that ability now to do that, to have that connection and know exactly what's going on. Also do some time improvements possibly. Look at a lot of different things we've just not had the ability to do.
Will this provide any resiliency improvements as far as dealing with power outages or disasters?
Well, the actual signals themselves, we're not allowed to connect generators, so it's not, it's not going to help us with the electricity, the powering of the system. We'll do a backup on the traffic control room portion of that, not the actual output field if that goes down.
When you say traffic signal system upgrade, what does upgrade include?
Basically, for us, it's a complete redo, complete communication system. Basically, for us, it's a completely redo, complete communication system, a complete cabling system, the hardware, everything inside of the signal control room to monitors, to the software that's actually doing the signal, timing. Everything now, nothing we have now can even be worked on. There's not even a maintenance contract that is able to, not able to get upgrades or things like that. So to us, it's a complete replacement. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion regarding the segment?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the transportation sidewalk and intersection improvements for the capital project ordinance BA 2019-37.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion is approved. One more from Mike. Item four, city council will consider approving amendments to the Greenway-Bike Way capital project ordinance BA 2019-37.
This is a, mayor, council, this is another project from the adopted bike way and greenway plan. It's actually the number four project that we're working through. As you can see on the map, it's the Town and Country Bike Way, it takes you from downtown Beaumont on Main Street. There's a short jog there before you get to Beaumont Road, I believe it's Holly Street, down Beaumont Road, onto McKennie. There's an opportunity, you see the dash line at Sellers Mill Road. If you go to the Autumn Park, was there ever developed or anything went there that you could go off to, you decided to go to Autumn Park, if that's ever developed or expanded. Discuss with that in the plan, it wasn't really intended for this, but that's an opportunity. Then you continue down to the Town and Country Park, down to the Hall River in that area. This will be, is called for a separated bike lane. We'll put out that as we get into this, there's an opportunity, if we have all-street parking or other barriers, you also know that things called sharrows or the markings on the pavement where you share the roadway, that those could be a possibility, but the plans are for this to be a separated bike way with a barrier, so it's safer for bike travel. And that's what's called for in the plan, but now that we get down to the details, we can all look at that. Just wanted to mention that. It's another application that can be used.
But there aren't any sidewalks on North Sellers Mill Road now?
No, this is all going to be all-street bike lane. No, Sellers Mill would be what we call, in the plan, is a neighborhood bike way, it would just be signed. It wouldn't be a sidewalk.
The sidewalks, just people asking specifically on North Sellers Mill Road?
Yeah. Any question? That's bike way only, because what you're seeing there is a bike way.
Mike, what's the cost of this?
It was estimated about $200, $225,000. That's another thing we have to get into. Our estimates are from the plan two years ago. We'll be doing that, I mean, that's something that, I mentioned, like I say, the use of different applications, cost factors going into play. We will do our best, this is our intent for this route, that's our intent. We'll have to see how that, how that plays out. But again, just trying to follow, follow the plan that was played out.
Mike, is the eastern end of this is next to Andrewsville, my dream C tech is there? Any specific allocation to connect to those educational facilities?
Not on the concept plan. We've had some experience trying to connect bus facilities with schools and other facilities, so there's some security there, but certainly the opportunity.
Is it, it'll affect the end rate on the quiet street?
Yes, so, I think it would be a great idea. We've been thought about, not taking up a solid training facility, but on the edge there, you can get to the school in that area and not have to go on the roadway. But we haven't thought about it at all. It's just a concept, a possibility. If the school, if the school would be interested.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion regarding the segment?
This is a lot of progress. These three projects together are really what we've been waiting for. It's very exciting. So I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the amendments to the Greenway-Bike Way capital project ordinance BA 2019-37.
Do I hear a second? No. Any questions regarding the motion to approve?
I just want to make a comment that this is, this is good, but we got to realize this is $900,000.
Say it again here.
This is $900,000 on sidewalk, I mean, this is a significant commitment. I mean, we need to be sure everybody understands that.
That it's not us.
It's not us. My concern going forward is we need to, just briefly, is, I don't know if it'd be a budget item or not, but we need to begin to take a look at what our plans are and attempt to perceive the cost and potentially budget it somehow. And if it's, here we are in May making a $900,000 budget amendment, I just think we need to make sure people realize it's real money.
Matty, you did previously mention these are from the allocated fund balance.
Correct.
Well, all fund balances are allocated.
So did you previously classify that as four pedestrian greenway?
All fund balances are allocated, but it's still a fund balance, allocated for the purpose of identifying what those funds are going to be used for in significant points in time, but it doesn't negate the fact that it's not an unlimited source of money to Harold's point. I would like to see a list of the monies that we've spent from the fund balance towards these projects, pardon, really the last two fiscal years along with the sort of quick hitter projects that we talked about, because it is a significant amount of money. So, point being is that are there other things that these monies could be allocated for that might benefit our group perhaps? Because there's a lot of money to be spent in it like that.
Any other questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion is passed.
To that point, we are trying to, we have made these plans and said these, this is the direction that we're going in, and the staff has put together the project ordinances so that it's possible for us to do it.
Well, there are other plans too that we have made, but identified as problems. So, you know, the key is to be sure that we're spreading the monies that we're spending amongst all the projects that we have that are in place, because, you know, this is a lot of money to go toward one specific project at one specific meeting. And there's other monies that have been spread out towards similar projects throughout the year, so it stacks up. And there's projects pending that have no monies allocated for them. So, to Harold's point, if we have a list of these items that we know are going to be addressed throughout here, I think they need to be at least budgeted and what we're going to be removing from the fund balance this year if we have. And then we can take a look at the other projects that are sitting there that are important to other people as well. Sorry, how much of that money is put toward those projects to get them to? All these, you know, projects, in all good faith, they're all good projects, but to be honest, they all compete with each other.
Correct.
There's just an unlimited, it's not an unlimited amount of funds there, and we're very fortunate to have put together a good fund balance over the years. But, you know, this is $900,000, the public just needs to know this is what we're going to spend on. I think it's great, but, you know, to put a system in, which I think, I would hear when that plan was approved, to put a system in as that plan was brought forward, it's going to be a lot more than $900,000 coming forward. This is not going to be a cheap process to continue this whole, to put all this together. And I think we need really have to establish some priorities to where the next links are designed and maybe even try to figure out a matrix on what drives those priorities in terms of planning, how we spend the funds we have to get the best use out of it, no matter what parts of the city it may be in. That's my opinion.
I mean, I think that Mike mentioned on the Beaumont section that that is the next priority on our pedestrian plan, which has a full matrix of scored projects. So we're blessed in that we've finally reached a point where we've aligned many of our strategic plans and filled in gaps such as adding Greenway Bike Way plan, so we can truly see how these projects come together and see the rank order side by side on them, which has enabled us now at this point to more confidently step forward with large allocations like this, knowing where a project falls and its benefit to helping residents get to parks, to schools, helping link all the way across the city and build all these different pieces, knowing that we're moving in a specific direction and not doing a piece move because we have all these strategic plans supporting us in a way that we've never had before.
To Harold's point, there are other projects that are competing with the same funds, so we need to look at those also.
And we're the ones that have not established those priorities.
Well, to some degree, we have. To some degree, we had a work session two years ago where we created a list of priorities and we re-identified those this year. And there's still some sitting that are completely untouched. So there are priorities out there, and we've got the police station where it right now to be. You know, they're just one of many, but. So, I mean, I understand and agree conceptually with having a plan and funding the plans that should go along, and certainly when you can leverage state dollars, I've got no argument in that at all. But there's a point in time that you got to say, all right, we got to push pause a little bit once we get focused in this other area because it matters to. And that's why, and I mentioned the work session Monday night, as we talked about in more resources, we need to get all those projects out there so it's in view, so we can look at them, because it's, it's difficult to make decisions on one particular area until you see the whole big picture and what the whole financial cost might be and how we plan for that, and quite frankly, how we prioritize it. How do we, how do we pay them? You know, is some of this going to, need to go to a public bond vote? You can't keep going to that reserve so much, but if you did, it gets a little dicey. So I just think we need to be careful going forward and put everything on the table. And it has hardened, we can do this on the general fund side, that's got all these projects out there. Of course, the cost is always going to be estimates, there's a question about that, but at least that gives the council and the public that matter a totality, a look at what we're talking about and where we're going over the next period of time. The funding source is identified as an assigned fund balance, but it's all one pool of money. Maybe we need to rebalance the funds. I mean, we can trick ourselves by saying, well, it's in, it's in account for that purpose. Well, it's just one big camp that we've got multi-purposes funded in there for. Maybe we need to reprioritize those camps.
Do you specifically, Councilman Rowan and Butler, have a vision for what that presentation to council might look like? We had a retreat recently, and obviously that was very full of discussion points. It sounds like you're looking for things sooner than our retreat for the following.
Well, anytime you go into your fund balance for a purpose, we can, we can leverage the conversation behind a plan that we've adopted. Maybe, maybe we don't need to adopt any more plans until we get some finished, because we've got all these plans out there that we've adopted that don't really have a dedicated funding source other than the fund balance, which is a bag of trash. That's all I'm saying. And we can move monies around in that fund balance and make it look like we're doing a wonderful thing in one particular area, but something else is suffering, and we do that. So we just need to be prudent as we move along, and if we need to identify deeper discussions about what to do with that fund balance money, then absolutely, that would be all in for a discussion. And it's not, you know, you should have a pedestrian plan, you should have a bike plan. But I think what we have to tell people is, once it's approved, some people believe, well, that means that's going to occur. Well, I think this is a term that we need to add, is funded or unfunded.
Right.
Give me to know, well, we've adopted this plan, but it is not funded. So it's on paper, it's good to have a vision, I think we need that, but I think people need to realize that just because a plan is adopted, that means it's funded then, to not to mislead anyone in terms of their expectations. So there's $1.6 million going into our appropriated fund balance at the end of this year, but how is that distributed amongst all of those funds in there? You know, it's wherever it goes. And then we can say, well, it's allocated for that. Well, it's not, it's $1.6 million that's allocated and reserved. We determine how to spend it, that's our role, that's what we do. So that's, that's exactly what I think is important, that it be identified that we have a plan that is unfunded, and then maybe that $1.6 million that goes into the fund balance, we say, all right, this is how much going to go into each category or in each area. Yeah, it's not, again, it's, it's trying to be transparent in a sense of, you can play games with this end of the year fund balance to, to point, we say, well, we've got this $1.6 million that, well, the city came out in positive this year, but we've moved other money instead of the money during the year. Literally, you have not.
More than that.
Yes, literally, I mean, if you just mathematically say what you budgeted, what you brought in, it might not be a positive reaction to it. I mean, many times it's not, and that's, and that's fair, but we just need to keep, to keep score going forward because, you know, it's, it's, we've got a lot of plans, and they're good. You need to have plans for the cities, but also we got to figure out, make some really tough decisions on what can prioritize in terms of funding some of those plans and how we're going to. We've got mechanisms, and Harden did a nice job at the work session, talking about some of that, you know, a few weeks ago. It's, it's real, I'm talking about real money here.
Well, on that note, and mentioning the work session yesterday, Harden talked about some priority-based budgeting and program-based budgeting. I know we've talked about this multiple times before, but they take some work. As you mentioned, it takes some digging deeper into the numbers and some further discussion about how do we take all of these unfunded plans, pull them together, compare them, and actually start prioritizing what's going to get funded. Recognizing that we've got budget coming up, staff's going to work it really hard, and that's going to include end of June. Do we want to task staff to look at something July, August, to come back and bring forward some type of prioritization, priority-based budgeting, initial meeting to begin that process?
I think they need to have ample time to look at this. This is not a, I'm not sure what ample time, I would think it'd be a minimum of 90 days, maybe more than that, because you're going to have all of these departments at the table, all enough plans. And then, you know, it'd be interesting to see what the total picture would look like at the end of the day when we have, how do you, you know, determine priorities, you know, what's driving the priority decision, you know, the public involvement in this. I think something we need to just consider, Mayor, what I would ask, we just maybe wait to discuss that at the next council meeting, and at least give staff the time to figure out what the appropriate amount of time that they would be able to put towards this, because we're talking about real work. Is that there?
Yes. All right, so we'll further that discussion on C4. Matty, does that give you?
One more, God, you can tell us how much time you might need.
Okay, what a reasonable amount of time to kind of begin that process, not burn everybody out.
Of course. Once you can have it in the margin.
Any further discussion on that point? I think it's really important, we're discussing some big stuff that's council.
Yes, if by this being, being goals that we have talked about in the last several years. years, those priorities, I mean, I hear you saying something more than that, you're saying, are all departments getting a fair shot at the, at the monies that are being designated? Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about police building, recreation center, and the kinds of things that we set as, or goals for the city? We're saying that we want to say what's happening with those projects and how they're going to be funded, are you saying something different? Because that's what, it sounds like it's two different things.
I'm saying that once it's been identified, obviously it's involved in this, you know, you can get, you know, my question is, for example, with the trails and greenways, does that identify source funding? Is that a priority?
Is it on the priority?
Is it on the priority list?
And if it is, is it getting funded beneath something that's a higher priority, drawing the list?
And, 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 you know, what I think staff has to look at, that's a constantly moving target, because there might be some things that comes up in public works that's totally, just, you know, has to be, I think that, that, that package of items very well can change every time because of what may happen, what may occur. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a vulnerable challenge to do, but obviously, you know, it's, plans are great to have, but you, 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 you know, do we spend money and create plans and set it on the shelf and let it go by? But also, this plan does not normally show a financing option, how you gonna, how you gonna spend the money? Having private business, but I don't think it works that way. But I believe we just need to kind of get our arms around and identify what has been established and how we'll set priorities in terms of trying to put what, when, and where in going forward, in terms of how we would take it.
I mean, there could be a project that's twelve or fifteen million dollars, and you look at that and say, we can't afford it. Well, about two more meetings of these, and we're just afforded twenty percent of it. So, you know, these things here tend to get hidden because they're small dollar amounts that would come in from them. You know, in our fund balance, last year, we had budgeted them for over half a million quick hitter projects, which you'd think is small, easy, not very expensive things, but it was over half a million dollars. So, we need to be sure we've got our, our minds around this and how they fit into the priority pieces, and then there's always emerging issues that are gonna come up that have to take precedent, and, and I get that as, as much as anybody, but if something comes up that's an emerging need, that we've got to do something immediately, that's fine, so be it, but let's stick to the priorities and be sure we're getting those checked off.
I mean, this thing denied that Mike brought up about the street light system, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Had to, had to do that.
No-brainer. The leverage of money to get something that will serve this community for twenty years, the upgrades it would give, the advantages it gives us, we don't have now, that's one that you, you've got to go forward with. So some of these you have to do, but, you know, that's what I'm saying, it depends on how these things come up, that it's hard to say what's gonna be done, this, this, and hell, but we need to figure out how we would, would recognize these needs and attempt to do the very best we can to, to recognize what's needed, and also how we can leverage with the private sector or other groups in terms of having finance things also. You know, this is a, it's a big moving target here of what we've got on the table, so it's great to have it on the table. Now that we've got to take a overview of all these projects, and, you know, the retreat was great, we agreed to do it, we liked a lot of things, but we left there, I think with people believing that all those things are gonna get done. So.
No, that's a correct statement, because we talked about doing a second meeting about non-funding, about looking at all the different finances. Harden's wrap-up at the following work session talked specifically about funding options for that, and then we will continue to explore those. So, I think that's important to note, that we didn't go into that thinking we were gonna be able to afford all of it, we recognized that each tool, whether it's a police station, whether it's an economic development project, they all require different funding, they're not all coming out of the general fund, and that's one of our tough tasks as council members, is to evaluate those projects, to prioritize those projects, and then with the help of staff and other experts, to link those to the proper funding mechanism that works for our community at the given economic situation of the community.
The belief of the general public is that we're spending that money. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I've had enough comments where people have said, why are you all spending that much money doing these things? So granted, we haven't spent any of it, we haven't committed any money towards what it is important.
Any other comments, questions on that? We'll have some further discussion on June four. We had no public comments on it this evening, any other council comments? I want to mention a couple upcoming events. I had the opportunity this morning to work with our letter carriers over at the post office to proclaim Letter Carriers Food Drive Day for this coming Saturday, May eleventh. That is the annual food drive that to date has collected one point six seven billion pounds of food across our country, and our letter carriers work very diligently on that day to collect food. All you have to do is put it in a bag, any bag or box, and leave it next to your mailbox, and they will pick it up, and they appreciate everybody's generosity. All the food collected in our community stays in our community, so we know the folks that support that food drive, those donations are critical. Our police department's also having a recruitment open house on that day, so after you've put your food drive donation next to your mailbox, head on down to the police station, that'll be going on from ten AM until one PM. And then, as you've probably seen online, repairs to the main aquatic center are complete, so you can get out there, you can stay active and enjoy the water as the weather gets warm. And then Link Trains is celebrating its two hundred and fifty thousandth rider with a special event on May sixteenth, got the transit up from three thirty PM until five PM. And, so, all right. Any other council comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you, everyone. We'll see you on June four.